All right, we're gonna call to order the Effingham County Board of Commissioners meeting this January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three at five o'clock P M. Have roll call, Mr. Floyd.
Here.
Mr. Burdette.
Here.
Mr. Corbett's here, Mr. Deloach.
Here.
And Mr. Kiefer.
Here.
And Mr. Loper is absent tonight. He's okay, right? There's just not gonna be any...
Yes.
Okay, very good. So we do have a quorum. I'm gonna ask everyone, do they please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, all led by Commissioner Deloach?
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord, thank you for our many blessings. Please help us remember that all good things happen through you, Lord. Please help us to do your will this evening. Please put your hand on all of our national, state, and local elected officials, and please provide comfort for them as the path they walk down. I would also ask for you this evening, Lord, to please put your hands on Dr. Franklin Goldwire's family. He has had a loss of a son. I can't imagine what he's going through, but please comfort him during this time. And in your name we pray, Lord. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Courtney.
Yeah, is it accident?
I'm not sure what happened. I just heard about it yesterday.
I did not know that. We have our agenda before us. Are there any corrections or additions to the agenda as presented?
No, sir, there are not.
All right, do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer, to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, we have our agenda. Welcome everyone tonight to the meeting. Comments on these items of the agenda should be agenda items only. Should you wish to make remarks, please come to the podium there and state your name clearly, speaking to the microphone at appropriate time. All the documents for this meeting are located on the clerk's, in the clerk's office and on the Board of Commissioners website. I hope everyone's had a chance to review those. And with that, we'll... Did I miss the minutes? Oh, I missed the minutes. Before we get into consent agenda, we've got the minutes, consideration approved, the January third, two thousand twenty-three regular session commission meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, the minutes are approved. Told you I was gonna make this a fast meeting tonight.
Let's do it. Let's go.
If I skip a few items, I make it even faster. All right, consent agenda. There's several items. These items shall include routine items and they are not for discussion, just for a vote. Item number one, consideration to approve a memorandum of understanding with Effingham County United Methodist Campground for use as a critical workforce shelter and/or post-event shelter. Item number two, under consent agenda, consideration to accept a grant award from ACCG Online Driver Training Law Enforcement Grant. Item number three, consideration to approve to reappoint members to the Georgia Savannah Regional Alliance.
Mr. Chairman, I may, just for technicality, I may just abstain from voting since I am one of the members on the G S R A, and I'll just, just won't vote.
Okay. Shouldn't be a problem. All right, that's consent agenda. Motion to approve consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Burdette. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. And we'll note that Mr. Deloach has abstained. All right, unfinished business. We have two items. Consideration to approve the second reading and application by Fetsor Lakes Development LLC as agent for Douglas Winwood Boykin and Peggy N. Boykin Madal. Request to rezon one hundred sixteen of one hundred and twenty-nine acres located at Hodgeville and Earl Lane Road from A R one to P D residential. To allow for the development of Winwood, a one hundred fifty-two single-family subdivision, map number four thirty-five, parcel number twenty-one, twenty-one A, twenty-one B, and map number four thirty-six, parcel number three in the second district. This item was postponed from January first, excuse me, January third, two thousand twenty-three, to have a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd to approve the second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
No.
Have one no, and that's Mr. Burdette. And the ayes have it, so it passes. Item number two, under unfinished business, consideration of the second reading to approve an amendment to Appendix C, Article seven, Planning Board Section seven point one point two. Meetings to change the planning board meeting night from the third Monday to the second Tuesday of each month. First reading approved, January third, two thousand twenty-three. Motion to approve second reading?
Make a motion to approve the second reading.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Floyd, second by Mr. Deloach to approve second reading. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, just for everyone's knowledge, that, that will take effect in March.
In March, okay. New business. Item number one, under new business, consideration to approve purchase order twenty-three dash R E Q dash O one eight with Certified Stainless Services LLC doing business as Westmark for the purchase of a fifty-ton low-boy trailer.
Good evening, Allison Bruton, purchasing agent. We did post an R F Q for the purchase of the fifty-ton low-boy trailer for the Public Works Department. We did receive four proposals, which the, the tabulation is included on your staff report. Staff recommends alternative one.
And we definitely got our money's worth out of the current one. I think it's right around fifty years old. So it's, uh, we definitely got all the goodie out of that one.
Any other questions or discussion? Do you have a motion to approve alternative one?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number two, consideration to approve purchase order twenty-three dash R F Q dash O one nine with M H C Kenworth Savannah for the purchase of a Class Eight truck.
Yes, sir. So we also posted an R F Q for the Class Eight truck, also for the Public Works Department. We did only receive one proposal. We did have three hundred and eighty-seven users contacted through the open government procurement site and a hundred and forty-one notified through the Georgia State website, but we did only receive the one proposal. There was a second email to us, but it was after the deadline, so we had to decline that one. But that total is in your packet, and staff recommends alternative one.
I would be impressed if that may, if that one's replacing a fifty-year.
Yeah. Yeah, this is two needed pieces here.
All right, any further discussion or question? Is that a question? How often do we move equipment that we're talking about?
That is a very good question, that I do not know the answer to, but I can...
How often do we, how often do we move stuff like that, or?
I assume it's every time we're, we're doing a chip and seal road, or...
That equipment has to be moved?
I assume that's what it's for. That's what I've assumed.
Yeah, for the larger equipment, the motor grinders and, and...
I think the excavators have to be moved as well.
CDL guy that moves all that stuff. That's a high-dollar truck.
Very good, E O M question.
And it is a Kenworth, and they're well-known, and they're a good truck.
You wonder if it'd be better for us to rent it when we moved it?
I was just curious about the, you know, how often it is, 'cause sometimes you can pay for them to be moved by certain companies around here. And, you know, for instance, I haul a forklift from Highway twenty-one to the north end of the county, and it costs about seven hundred dollars a boot. So if you're doing that, you know, if we're actually moving equipment a couple of times a week, it'd take a long time to eat up two hundred and seventy thousand dollars worth of equipment, or two hundred and eighty. That was my only thought, you know. So, but if we're moving stuff four or five times a week, and we're, you know, then it's gonna be more beneficial to have.
I think the other thing, though, is if it holds up the job, you know, we're in a time crunch now to try to get some of these roads done while the weather's right. If we're, everybody else is working those trucks, we can't get somebody to move our equipment, then what?
Well, it's, it's...
I suspect they're moving a lot because I holler in, Jamie's hollering.
Must be. That's why I was curious. 'Cause, I mean, we can get something moved in two hours, really.
E O M would, would give us good advice on that. I'm thinking, too, in storms, when you have to move equipment to fix and dig and excavate, whatever, you, you can't wait for somebody that can move your equipment. We gotta get it over there.
And, and I will say one thing. One thing I'm gonna recommend in the forthcoming budget is potentially the expansion of our chip seal program with additional set of equipment, additional crew. And that'll basically, you know, probably increase this utilization by about thirty percent, 'cause that's mostly what we're using it for. That and moving the big dozers and, and the excavators around. And for the most part, you know, we have, you know, s- some of the smaller equipment, you know, we can move around on trailers, but, you know, this is really for the...
The big stuff.
For the big, big stuff.
I was just curious. They don't wanna hold us up on technicality like that.
All right, do you have a motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Floyd for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No.
Thought we approved it already, we didn't.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number three, consideration to approve a final plat and warranty deed submitted by Clay Price of Simco Investment Group LLC for Blue Jay Commons Phase One located off of Blue Jay Road, which consists of thirty-nine lots, map number four thirty-two, parcel number forty-eight in the second district.
This is, as you said, the Phase One of Blue Jay Commons on Blue Jay Road, just at McCall and the railroad tracks, that area. The contractors have installed the roads, water, reuse, sewer, and stormwater infrastructure in Phase One, and these thirty-nine lots will be, are, are ready to, ready to go, so they need final approval from you for the final plat before they can sell them. E O M inspected the right-of-way and public utilities located within the right-of-way, recommend approval. Staff reviewed the final plat. County attorney reviewed the deed, and we recommend approval. We've received the bond recommendation and approved that, and we have received the bond for ten percent of construction cost for Phase One. Staff recommend alternative one.
Any questions, discussion? Motion for alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach for alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Item number four, consideration to approve a request for annexation as submitted by the city of Springfield for a property owned by J M U S K A A N LLC located at the corner of Highway twenty-one and Ron Station Road, consisting of one point nine-two acres, map number four twenty-nine A dash eighteen A in the fourth district.
Mr. Chairman and board members, this application was received from the city of Springfield, and no need to belabor it. You have the material there. It is contiguous with other properties within the city, and staff recommends approval.
Okay. Any question, discussion? Motion to approve alternative one?
Make a motion to approve alternative one.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Burdette, second by Mr. Deloach to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously.
Do we know if, if Springfield intends to include that in their overlay district? Just curious.
Should, 'cause it's right on twenty-one.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah, the first five hundred feet would be in there, at least.
All right, item number five, consideration to approve, to ratify, and affirm the local maintenance improvement grant, Lamig, two thousand twenty-three paving selection, and acknowledge the pending advertising for the invitation to bid.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this, we have to send our list into G dot on an annual basis. Once that is submitted and approved, we then go out to bid on this. I was out a good portion of last week going over all of their candidates for this, and we've settled on the, these four roads. It's going to be slightly over. We don't actually have the estimate figure yet, but I'm basing it on, on mileage for the, 'cause I'm waiting on prices for the last two. So the first one is Old Augusta Road between Nelly Road and Ebenezer Roundabout, and so that would essentially is the last section of Old Augusta Road that needs to be, A, resurfaced, 'cause it's in, it's in bad condition, but also bring it up to truck route standards and, which is, you know, wider lanes, thicker pavement, shoulders, like we've done, all the way to twenty-one. The next is the main drag of Belmont Glen, and I think we learned a lesson on this one with regards to upgrading our design standards for our main arteries for large neighborhoods. Because if you look at the pavement report that Roberts did, you will see that most of the roads are in pretty good shape in Belmont Glen, except for that main drag, which got ripped apart because of all the construction traffic that went in there to, to build the houses, so...
But that was before we had the new standards.
That was before we had the new standards, right. And so this would basically isolate those areas. You do have base failure on that, and so it is going to be either, either a millinery surface or a, an F D R of asphalt in resurface. The third is Grayson Road, and that's, a portion of Grayson Road from seventeen had been repaved by Guyton. And so that picks it up at the Guyton Line and takes it to Old Lewisville Road. That's about point nine miles. That's a millinery surface. And then the last one is Silver Hill Church Road, which is, connects Old Dixie Highway and Clio Shawnee. It's about one point six miles, and that's also a millinery surface. That'll bring us, like I said, it'll be over the one point three million, but we don't wanna be under. And so, you know, we, if I were to remove any one of these roads, we would essentially be under the, the grant limit, so we'll be slightly, slightly north of that, but that's where we're, that's what we're looking at project-wise. And staff is recommending alternative one.
Any discussion or questions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Deloach, second by Mr. Kiefer to approve alternative one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Hearing none, it passes unanimously. I believe that concludes our business, so we'll go to reports from our commissioners and staff, and we'll start with our staff and come back to our commissioners.
Yeah, I'd just say, real quick, on, we are preparing with Marie's planning and the rest of the staff to, for the presentation for the Atlanta retreat. If you've got topics, it's gonna be, again, you know, a lot of capital improvement-based presentations, but if you've got topics that you need addressed there, please, please let me know, and I'll make sure they're included. The only other thing I wanted to bring up, and I just wanted to bring it up just so it's on public record, so the, the roads that were F D R'd, the ash roads and chip sealed, we're dealing a little bit, we're dealing with a issue with the top layer component, which is the chip seal on that. It's actually starting to, it's only been on there a month, month and a half, and it's already starting to chip off. It's obviously, the roads have not been accepted or completed yet. And so we're working with the contractor to have those issues addressed. Right, as of right now, they're kind of, they're doing a core sample to see if it was applied correctly, and then if it was applied correctly, you know, what's the, you know, what's the potential solution for it if, if chip seal's not gonna work? So I just wanna let the folks on Archer Road, Old Dixie Highway, Mount Pleasant, and Old Augusta, up in the northern end of the county, know that their roads are not complete, and we're trying to work on the solution. And that's all I got.
All right, I've got a clerk. Anything for my clerk?
Quickly, your E O M monthly report has been emailed to you. We received an invitation during Effingham Day events from Thomason Hutton. They're interested in having a dinner with you all that night. That would be on the thirtieth, just that Sunday.
Sunday night?
Sunday night. E O M is Saturday.
Who's Sunday?
Thomason Hutton.
Thomason Hutton.
We don't have a chamber thing that...
There, there is, but it wraps up at six. It's just a reception.
Okay, so they won't do that for that? Sure.
Okay.
Set up here, there, buddy?
Sure, sure.
So as Tim mentioned, we're still working on the agenda for the retreat, but I will do a snippet, just giving an outline of those events from our retreat time through the Effingham Day events. I'll send that to you via email as well.
Okay, and we are having our workshop on that Saturday and Sunday morning?
Yes. Saturday, starting at nine, wrapping up at four.
So we're heading up to Friday.
Yes. Check-in is on Friday. Sunday is nine-thirty until noon.
Yeah, I think that'll help us not have to try to wrap it up that evening. We can come back the next day and put our action points the next day. Okay?
So we're gonna meet on Sunday as well?
Yes.
That morning. If we don't need but an hour, that's fine. But I thought, it's always good, what's our action points? What we're gonna do next? Let's come back and do that if we thought about it over the night.
Yeah.
If you ever need an hour, that's five forty-two, but we'll wrap it up for sure by twelve.
As far as state agencies, we, we got anything lined up, we need lined up, or?
Well, well, other than the, we were actually talking about that earlier today. We don't think we need anything E P D-wise at this moment. We think it might be a little bit early on a few projects, and other ones, I think we got in pretty good shape. Where we are gonna, I am gonna work, obviously, we've got the big meeting with, with G dot as a group, but I'm gonna, again, try and work a smaller meeting after the fact with us to discuss local road issues with the board.
And I mentioned to Tim, I don't know if it's any interest, but we might wanna try to do this if it's available. If John could help us with it. You know, we've got some opportunities. Some of them are executive session discussions. We can't discuss them out here, but on parks and recreation, it might be good if D and R had a chance to get with us. I, I'm wondering if there's some funding or some partnership that we could do, with, one we can talk about is Atlas Reservoir. We've got a sort of a tentative plan. Maybe we should share it with them. They might be fixing to partner with another county on something. They might say, whoa, this is two hundred and thirty-eight acre lake. They might have some funding and some opportunities there, so, you know, instead of just listening to legislators all day long, if we can get a thirty-five, forty-minute meeting with them and lay out and say, hey, we'd just like for you to schedule something down the road with us, talk about how you can help us. And we know the other projects we're looking at that we hope we can discuss in the near future, but share it with them. They may have some real interest in those, those items as well, 'cause it's, it's good for the area, not just for, for the county.
Yeah.
One's on the state road, and the other's gonna be...
Yeah, I mean, some of them have historical significance and such.
So I've asked him to maybe look and see if John or somebody could help us get a D and R meeting before we try to meet with them a little bit over there.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I had a email from a resident off Nice Road, which splits, I think, mine and Roger's district, about reducing the speed limit. I think it's forty-five over there. I mean, we get quite a bit of calls about people speeding through these neighborhoods, but I don't know what the, I don't wanna do it based off one call, but I don't know how we go about even researching to make a determination there. But anyway, I told him I would bring it up in the meeting for discussion. He sent me a picture of people jogging along Nice Road, which I think, we got parks for there. I wouldn't be running up and down any of these roads, you know, but anyway, I don't know how we typically look at that. If we need to do speed studies, maybe through the Sheriff's Department or something like that, you know, they can set up their little box and, and measure to see what percentage of people are speeding, or maybe just ask the sheriff to patrol that, set up a radar.
And then that was gonna be the, the first step, I was gonna think, is, you know, he has that kind of that, it, it serves two purposes, you know, that, that speed warning thing.
Right.
And, you know, what, what it does is, A, it causes people to slow down, but, you know, it also kind of measures the speed and gives you a report.
Let's do that, see if contact Jimmy's off, just see if we can get something set up.
Testing out there to see if there really is a big problem.
A week or a few days, and just see what, if there is a serious issue there.
That'd be a good start, because it, it would give us the data to see, are people actually speeding, or it just seems like they're going fast, 'cause you're standing beside the car when it goes by.
If you're running, it's probably, it's probably five.
Unless you're running from the car.
Also, it just lets people know that there's attention on the road, you know, from law enforcement, and...
I think that's the only thing I need to...
Staff, get with Jimmy on that and see if we could do something. That'd be great. Anything else?
I think that's it for this discussion.
Got a couple things. I'll try not to be too long and not be a record meeting for us tonight. Along the same lines of the forest, and I talked, sent him a message earlier on this one, the, the piece of road between the railroad track, El McCall, and, and the school. Truck driver called me today, and he said, Roger's thing's become, you know, it's kind of chipping off on the side. It's so close driving, and it's a forty-five mile an hour speed limit, you know, we need widening. I said, yeah, that's coming. It's gonna take a little while. He said, we're, we're almost swapping mirrors, and when somebody's going forty-five, fifty miles an hour between there and the school, it's getting dangerous. He said, I drive it almost every day. So I was wondering if we could do something like that, maybe, he said, we really need to be thirty-five between there and the school. And I agree. That's, you know, the road narrows in a big way, and it's, it's right at the school entrance and everything else. I think, can we look at doing a thirty-five between the railroad track and that?
And we could do, we can put, we could change the speed limit. We just can't enforce it via radar, right? I mean, so that's the, you know, that's the issue.
Yeah, anything that'd probably help, maybe put some of those signs out there to kind of...
Just having thirty-five mile an hour signs may help, particularly knowing that, you know, there's a school zone coming up as well. And, and keep in mind, from the railroad tracks to twenty-one, it is thirty-five, right? It starts forty-five at the railroad tracks.
Exactly.
That's what I was thinking, it's thirty-five.
And it's still residential for...
No, it's thirty-five.
And, and there's a school.
Yeah, exactly.
Right past the railroad tracks, it goes to forty-five.
Oh, going toward Blue Jay.
Going toward the school, yeah.
Yeah.
No, going toward...
No, between the railroad tracks and the school is forty-five, isn't it?
Thirty-five, isn't it?
No, it's forty-five.
It's forty-five. Thirty-five in the morning when it's flashing.
Oh, okay, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, but it's forty-five the rest of the whole day.
If they're not coming or going, then it's forty-five. I got you.
So it's, it gets, he said, he said, I guess, I'm a big truck, professional truck driver, but it's pretty scary at times, and I can imagine being, going in the school zone, even though the school's not in, it's probably good identity.
Well, when are you kind of proposing it, going back to forty-five? Would it be past the school, or?
Right past the school.
Maybe right past those railroad tracks, like in between the railroad tracks, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, well, I would, I would go railroad tracks to, 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 or at least to the school zone.
At least where the school's on.
Yeah.
Which is right at the railroad tracks, so...
Yeah, it's not a big stretch of road anyway, and, 'cause now it's thirty-five, forty-five, school zone, then forty-five. But the school's not in, and they're, they're just, hmm, you know, which, yeah.
I'm checking that and see, but I, it just seems to me, common sense-wise, the truckers ought to be doing thirty-five, but they know it's a problem. And then the cars during the school time, you can't do thirty-five through there, really. I mean, they're, they're backing up. I mean, while school's going in and getting out...
Yeah, it's not during school. It's during the rest of the time. Rest of the time during the day, we're just mainly trucks back and forth.
Yeah.
You know, so it's...
Well, the only thing I would caution and be careful, probably need to have a discussion with the sheriff's office. If that were to change, would, could that possibly prevent him from even using radar in that section?
Well, that's what I'm saying, so...
We need to be careful, you know, by changing it and not having it on the radar.
We can, we can change the speed limit, but the sheriff would only be able to enforce what is, what is approved by the most recent study that y'all did last year.
Oh, okay.
And so...
People could go faster, 'cause they can't get radared.
So you...
Right, but who's gonna know that? And the school zone would still be thirty-five, I would think, that could still enforce it.
And, you know, and, and you could look at...
I guess, I just...
I mean, if it slowed half the traffic down, that would be a win.
They're using cameras over there now, though, to find and police. Would that go away, or could he...
No, no.
No, that's always...
They, they are for the forty-five speed limit when they're not flashing, and the thirty-five when they are.
They'll give you a ticket. If you go through there when it's not flashing, you go, say, sixty, through forty-five, you'll get a ticket.
If you go, if it's not flashing, you go, I think, north of fifty-five...
You'll get a ticket.
During school hours.
It'll remain that even if we changed it to thirty-five.
Yeah, and we're ma...
Then could they, could they change that to thirty-five and still give you tickets if you do forty-eight now or fifty in that thirty-five when it's not flashing?
I have to find out the rules on those traffic cams. They're tricky.
'Cause I'm not talking about radar, and I'm talking traffic cam.
Understand, yeah.
'Cause if you could do that, it would, it would...
But no, they use radar. The traffic cameras are using radar.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, right, and if the signs would be too.
So I would, I don't know this, I would assume they have to abide by radar. Whatever the rough little law, yeah, I don't.
We'll talk to the sheriff and look into it.
Okay.
That's all I can say, okay, what else?
Um, just say a few words if it's okay, gonna bounce around a little bit, I made a lot of notes today. Um, now I voted against the, the zoning again in my district today, it, it's caused us something I feel strongly about, but, you know, my thing is, I mean, everybody operates in their own self-interest when they're here, and everybody does. But that's human nature and, and there should be disagreements and, and that's healthy, we should be disagree, we shouldn't agree on everything all the time. But then progress is super important, so we, we need to make sure we have balance with that progress. Uh, and our roles, just started thinking about this a lot, what, what is our role as, as commissioners and, uh, so I'm, I'm a person, this is what I want to be, more and more, the person that represents thousands of voices. Um, and sometimes we go against that one developer or person, we're the aggregated voice of the people going against that developer or person. And they're after their self-interest and they have that right to do that. I would be doing the same thing, anybody would be, so I can't fault those people for, for, for doing what they're doing. I just need to stand up for what I'm doing and do it right in, in a professional manner and not wear my heart on my sleeve like I do. I need to be professional, because I respect all you guys immensely, I respect the staff and I love this county. Um, so I want to be more of that role as I should be, so that the community, community we know and love, uh, won't be negatively impacted by my actions or negatively impacted about, from a developer's actions, you know, and that's, I guess that's the balance I try to achieve, how much negative impact is, is on the people that it's burdened versus the gain of the person trying to do so, that could be a property owner, um, investor or developer or anybody. And, and it's, it gets tough, and, and I, last meeting, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I took it a little too, too much to heart and I, I should, I should not have. And I, I'm gonna be better at that, I'm gonna take the emotions out of it and try to make good, sound judgment and, uh, honorable judgment. I want to do the right thing, the moral quality of my decision should be always there, and I think the moral quality of my decision today was, it wasn't anything personal. I know, like and trust James Dashar, you know, there's nothing against him. At the end of something like that, I should be able to go up to James and shake his hand and say congratulations, and it, and not take that home and not fire back at anybody here. That, that's, that should be what I am, I'm gonna strive more and more to, to be that. If you guys will work with me, I, I appreciate it, because I, I really care about what I do and I, I want to make the best of it. And, uh, when we can be together or work together, we do some amazing things and I've seen it happen, and I want to continue to do that. And, and I'm gonna work on me, so don't, so don't worry about that, I'm definitely gonna do that. You know, I feel like I have a fiduciary responsibility, um, to go against them at times, even though I know I can trust them, you know, it's tough. Now, I've known people here for years and years and, and it's, you know, I don't, I never want to lose a friendship or anything like that, but I've got to stand up for that moral principle at the time, just gotta do it the right way, you know, I want to, and I'm gonna work on doing that the right way. And that's all, thank you.
Appreciate that, and I think that's what we're all trying to do, and I do appreciate how this board works together, and it's good that we bring different perspectives and, but I think you're right. Um, we battle for what we believe to be the right thing, but at the end of that, being, um, strong enough to say, hey, I represented well my, my constituents and I'm, we won't, you know.
They're just as passionate about it as I am.
That's right.
And the guy up there trying to get it done is just as passionate as I am as well, so. You know, that, it's business, it's, you know, I, I gotta do what's on my conscience and what I think is morally correct.
I appreciate that, Roger, thanks.
Sure, thank you.
Addressing that for us, um, I want to mention a couple of things before we go around the horn, um, finish around the horn. Um, the Highway thirty in Hodgsville, um, we are really working hard, because we did hear the concerns of you and the constituents last week, to see if we can't get an officer out there, I think we're all in agreement with that, and I know, uh, Port Whitman's looking at that, hopefully ask information the next day or two.
Yeah, hopefully, yeah, this week.
Hmm?
You know, I, I hopefully should hear something back this week, we talked to them last week.
About getting officer, that'll give us an idea with that roundabout, so I'm excited about getting an officer there and, uh, relieving some of that pressure for our, our constituents. Then get a kind of an idea of what it's gonna look like, roundabout will be bet, roundabout will be better, but we'll get an idea of what it looks like when traffic.
The impact would be, I think it'd be great. I do have a quick question I forgot to ask, um, I saw the note on the fire station on Hodgsville.
Yes.
Any idea when the completion, when it, we can actually use that?
Uh, do you know? Uh, fi- fire, Hodgsville Fire Station, uh, completion estimate?
Chief may know.
Okay, yeah, and we're, we're actually gonna put temp, I mean, the, we're not gonna let delivery of doors hold it up, um, and so we're actually getting temporary doors, um, so we, similar to what we did in this building, uh, so we can get it operational while we wait for the other doors to come in, they're, they're still running into that problem.
Okay, thank you. And the other item, real quickly, uh, workshops, I've mentioned a couple of commissioners that, you know, we, we're doing them annually now, we're doing them kind of bi-annually, twice a year. We probably ought to look at quarterly, having a whole day, I know we're gonna go to that, uh, once a month, I think we're gonna do a one hour.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, an hour before, you know, just so we can stay abreast of discussion and so forth, but we probably need to look at, so at this, at this, uh, workshop in Atlanta, if we could start looking at some dates down the road, so we could plan to be available for, you know, a seven or six, seven hour, we're just growing so fast, we gotta stay on top of it. And along the workshop thing, I was, just mentioning to Jamie while I go, it just seems like with our database and our license, we ought to be able to, when we're doing something that affects trucking, surface mines, developers, in our database, and maybe Mark can help us with this, we should have those who have license in those areas and just send the document or send something out to them, say, hey, we're having a public hearing versus just the paper. Think about ways, Mark and staff, that we can intentionally get information out to those who it may impact, and we may get better representation, because how many times we had a meeting and nobody comes, you know, to discuss something? And then they say, well, you don't want to hear from us, but we do, we, we advertise, we do all we can to make you well, but that might be something we could do. So I would suggest if Mark could help us with that, staff look at that, with our database, we should be able to target people who are impacted by decisions we're gonna make. So we're having a public hearing, it's just, if it costs us three hundred dollars to send out a mailer, send it out. It'd be what, if it costs a thousand dollars, if we get it right, it'd help. So that's two costs.
That could come out of the, uh, the IT master plan, communications master plan, we're working on trying to kind of interface all these different departments and.
Mm-hmm, and, and knowing that's where we want to go.
To be able to isolate certain groups that would be interesting.
And if that's on our radar to, to isolate those groups, we can advertise with them, then they can plan the, the database to, to be able to do that. So Teresa could say, all right, all the developers, boom, I'm gonna send, uh, uh, a letter out, whatever email, I don't know how, but something that would be
Right.
Impact, so something like that, I don't, I don't have anything else, I'll cover whatever else I got to workshop.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, um, we have executive session minutes, I think, before us. Do we have a motion to approve executive session meetings?
Make a motion to approve as presented?
Second.
That's the January third.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
Okay, so I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Kiefer, second by Mr. Deloach, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Hearing none, they pass unanimously, and do we have a need for executive session tonight?
Make a motion to adjourn.
So we have a motion to adjourn, Mr. Deloach, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr., um, um, what's your last name? Burdette, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed, no? We stand in adjournment. More coconut oil.